Good morning and welcome to the June 24th Planning Commission meeting. And we will start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and that is for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call please.
Here.
McAlroy is here.
I'm here.
McAlroy?
Here.
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Here.
Here. So we're all here, more or less. We'll open the meeting with a public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate in today's public comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manners if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio stream will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. This meeting can be planned, be viewed at the planning commission meeting, meeting can be viewed at the planning commission meetings. Tulare County's main webpage under state law matters presented this matter cannot be acted upon by the planning commission at this time for items appearing on the agenda. The public will be invited to comment at the time the item comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Note, in order to be considered by the planning commission, testimony on public hearings, items must be given at the time of the schedule for public hearing. As a courtesy to those that attend, please turn, turn off or place in your alert mode your cell phones and compliance American Disability Act. If you need special assistance, participate in the meeting, please contact the Resource Management Agency, 559-624-7000. So at this time, we are in the public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to comment on anything that's not appearing on the agenda? So should I give a few minutes in case somebody wants to call in? Okay, please come up, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. Which podium?
All the way over there. I'm sorry, gotta make you walk, but.
Um, no problem. Had surgery on my leg, so it's getting better. Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, uh, commission for allowing me to comment. Uh, my name's Dave Nena, uh, 6006, Road 248, Dukor. I know this is coming up and I think I'm being preemptive on it. It happens to deal with a solar project, which is, uh.
Is this on our agenda?
Nineteen, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, okay, continue.
Uh, it's PSP 19 dash 073.
Microphone closer to your mouth, please. We want to hear you. Thank you.
And, and one of the reasons I think we're being a little preempt, or I'm being a little preemptive on this is, uh, there was no notification given. Uh, it's not to point fingers or put a stop to the project or anything. It's just informational right now because of answers that we never received. And I believe letters are supposed to come out and notify the residents and neighbors that this project would be impacting. And possibly because of the COVID thing, uh, I don't know with furloughs, that may not have happened. So, uh, how we found out about this project, my wife and I, is we've seen individuals out there walking in grids and didn't think much of it. And then later on, we seen surveyors about two weeks ago, I believe, and asked them, well, what are you doing? And they go, oh, we're surveying for a solar project. And we couldn't really get a lot of information out of them. So I made contact with individuals at county and it was given the information. It's still in draft form, but at no time, I had no idea that this draft document was sitting at, uh, the library in Terabella. I don't even know where that library is. And I believe it was published in the Exeter paper. And I didn't know Exeter had a paper, so I apologize for that. I'm retired military and my wife and I bought our home because of, uh, the pristine area in which it is. And we're farmers, we're in, in, she's heavily into ag, uh, works for a large agriculture company out of Riverside. And, uh, the view that we have surrounding our area is all ag land, beautiful area. And, uh, it, it's farmed, uh, with winter crop and then grazing. So we just love it, uh, because of the atmosphere, the quietness and looking out the window and just seeing all this, uh, open land and, uh, in, uh, the orchards that surround us. So to know that a project being proposed going in there is really gonna mess up our view, I mean, that, one of the things about it, it's probably not even a hundred foot from my front door. And we have hundreds, hundreds of acres in front of us that are open land. And they're proposing a hundred acres or more of panels. And then they'll put up the chain link fence with big signs of danger, high voltage. While in the military, I served 21 years, I actually guarded the iron curtain. I don't want the iron curtain in front of my house when I look out my door. If I wanted to live next to something that looked like a prison, I'd move to corporate or something. So that was, that was one of the concerns. Uh, if that can be mitigated, uh, like I said, we're not trying to stop the project. We just want to know what are going to be some of the measures. And I spoke with some of the guys, a couple of them that are in charge of this project. And, uh, we had, had a good conversation. So I was making them aware of a lot of my concerns. And also being a pilot, I wanted to know if it's going to have an impact on the VOR when you're flying, uh, heading into Porter Ville for runway three zero, is that reflection going to be a distraction? When they're saying, well, it's only a couple of miles. Well, aircraft fly pretty fast, so that's almost short final. And they, they assured me that they're non-reflective. I, I don't know this. I just know the ones that I've flown over up by Fresno and Sacramento and it does have a, kind of distracting. So I was wondering what they're going to do to mitigate that. And do they make noise? Uh, they assured me they are 44 decibel. I don't know this. I hear them humming all the projects that, if you go down 65, there's several, uh, large solar projects that are already there. And, uh, they do make noise. So I don't know where their little substations are going to be located. Uh, they assured me it'll be away from our house. But the motors do make noise because they have the sun trackers on them. So throughout the day, I guess when they adjust to follow the sun, they will be making noise. Our other concern was there any health issues? Are there harmonics that will be a kind of irritable sound? Because we, we do live in very quiet. The only thing you hear at night are crickets and coyotes. That was one of the reasons to attract us to buy our home there over 20 years ago. A couple of the other things that we're looking at is we've been doing a little research and we haven't delved totally into it. If we get our house appraised, well, I'm going to do an appraisal. And I, my understanding from other people that solar projects that went up very in close proximity to their homes, that, uh, the value went down 25%. Well, I'm going to be kind of preemptive. I'm going to do a, uh, have somebody come out and do an estimate and evaluation of the house. And then if this project does take place, do another one. But my question will probably be, you know, who's going to make up that difference? Because if I had it appraised before, here's a praise laughter. And I don't even know if that's going to be a concern. So like I said, just being kind of preemptive and, uh, eventually like some of these questions answered. And like I said, the guys that had spoke to me were pretty cooperative and forthcoming. And I know that the draft EA that they submitted, I've been involved, I also was a project manager for many years. So I've been involved in a lot of these EAs and EIRs and different things for doing projects. And if I'm the one doing the project, I'm going to submit to the planning commission the one that's most in my favor. And I'm not necessarily going to put everything in there that's necessary. And it's the same thing that happened with this one. Because I told them, I go, how, you just conveniently left my house out when it's very, very close proximity to your project. And the pictures that were submitted look like this, open, unused ag area, grazing land and everything, when you got a house right there in your midst.
I'm going to interrupt you this time because you've gone beyond the five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Interested in hearing what you have to say. But I don't believe this has come before us yet. We haven't approved it. So there's a whole process, including Airport Land Use Commission, which, uh, you can have a say so that it's basically us, but it's a different organization key. So I'll ask Aaron.
This is, yeah, we're, we're going to have comments. Um, and you're right, this is going to come before you, uh, a few months from now. Uh, but what's being discussed right now is the draft DIR that was circulated. So, um, there's ample opportunity to still continue to, as we'll tell everybody, uh, we, we take comments all the way through the very end of all the processes. So not, not to worry, uh, but your, your comments, we, we don't respond to, uh, public comments generally before, uh, before the agenda items. But, um, we have your, from today's minutes, we have any more added comments you've made for the record.
Yes, sir. And I understand that. That's why I said, I'm just being kind of preemptive on this. I know it hasn't come up yet, but, uh, it was on, based on a recommendation from somebody from county because we never received a letter notifying us that there was a project going to take place in our area.
You will get a notification, but the.
And, uh, I might as well, for the record, we will, uh, have a more robust notification on this project based on the comments of the gentleman here, um, to, to all the property owners in that area, uh, more so than we've ever done before, so.
Thank you. And at that time, I will have documentation and photos for submitted reports.
Yeah, typically we do 10-day notice and I think we're moving on like 60-day notice on this, this project. So some, so somewhere between 40 and 60 days, depending when, we're, we're ready to bring the agenda item forward.
Okay. Uh, Chairman, Commission, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service. I'm also a Vietnam veteran.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the June 10th minutes?
There's somebody else that, uh.
Oh, somebody else? Okay, excuse me. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Cecilia Parsons. I'm resident of, uh, community of Dukor. And, uh, I'm also commenting on the proposal.
Move the microphone just a little closer to you.
Oh, commenting on the proposal of, of the solar farm. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that Dukor is a US Census declared disadvantaged community. And the impact of the dust and the water usage of these types of projects, um, should be considered. Thank you. That's all I needed to say.
Okay, and just pay attention because we're a couple of months away before we hear this, okay? Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Seeing none, I will close the, uh, public, uh, comment and move on to look for a motion to approve the minutes for June 10th. Thank you for coming. We'll look forward to seeing you in the future.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 10th meeting.
Please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Is there a voting?
We're back to you. I'm sorry.
We're back on to, uh, the.
Tom, did you second?
You gotta quit the money.
Oh, forgot.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item four, uh, which is parcel map. We only have one hearing. All actions on parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone just wishes to discuss any one of these items, requested a pull for separate hearing. No staff presentation will be given at any, given on any item unless requested. In, in any case, there will be a separate vote for each item, and there's only one, so two members of the public. If you wish to participate in public hearing, you may call in at 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manners if you were here. If you choose not to call in, you may submit or participate by submitting an email on this item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name, address for the record. Emails should include the following, the agenda item number, which in this case it is 4A. And, uh, it can be sent to the clerk of the planning commission at the planning, at, at this email address, planningcommission, all lowercase, one word, at co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record if you receive, if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. And item A, uh, 4A is a tentative parcel map, PPM 2011. And, um, does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Oh, you gotta open that.
And I have opened the public hearing, so someone would, would like to say what we're approving?
Did you, can you close?
What?
Yeah, did we close the?
I gotta close it too. I don't get paid enough for this job. I want a pay raise. Okay, close the public hearing, move to the planning commission for a recommendation. So I'm ready.
I'll go ahead and, uh, make a, uh, motion to approve categorically exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA and state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Sections 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve a tentative parcel map number PPM 20 dash 011 with exceptions and a final map required. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Go ahead and vote.
How come this says, uh, moved by your bill with that?
I pushed the wrong button, so.
Hey, let me reset. Hold on one moment.
Try it again. There we go. I guess the motion is carried. Moving on to item four, excuse me, 5A. And the instructions are pretty much the same as the last time, public, this is a public hearing, it's been open to members of the public. If you wish to participate in today's public hearing via phone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to the address of planning commission in the same manners if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio stream will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes. So please adhere to the time limits. If you choose not to call in, you may participate by submitting an email on this item to being heard. Emails should be, include sender's name, address for the record. And emails should include the following subject, agenda item, which in this case 5A, and can be sent to the clerk, planning commission, at, uh, all one word, lowercase, planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the public record, but sometimes may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received by the public hearing after the public has cleared will be made part of record if you receive, if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions on today's public hearing. So we'll open up the public hearing, which we already did for 5A, special use permits, PSP 20 dash 013, Bobby Ragsdale Jr., categorically exemption, special use permit to allow third residence on 1.9 acre parcel in an AE 20 zone. The site is located on Road 156 Visalia, approximately 3.5 miles south of Highway 198. And David Alexander, you're our, there you are. God, scared me. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch and commissioners. Uh, I'm David Alexander, planner two in the county's project processing division. For you this morning, it's categorical exemption and special use permit number 20 dash 013 to allow for the establishment of a third residence as built on a 1.91 acre parcel in the AE 20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. This is the vicinity map. The subject site is located at 26049, Road 156 Visalia, on the west side of Road 156, uh, approximately two and a half miles south of State Route 198, southeast of Visalia. These are the real and existing zoning maps. The subject site is located outside of any urban, um, development boundaries and is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan with the land designation of Valley Agriculture. Uh, the site itself and all surrounding sites are zoned AE 20 and contain various agriculture and scattered rural residences. The site is not under a Williamson Act contract. Uh, the county environmental health services division, the county public works engineering division, the Tulare County Fire Department, the environmental coordinator and the building division were sent to consultation request on April 9th, 2020. This is the site plan. Entitlement is found in Section 9.6 Point E15 of the Tulare County zoning ordinance. A third residence or mobile home may be permitted in the AE 20 zone if a use permit is first secured through the provision of Planning Commission Resolution Number 7777. This project meets the criteria and standards for approval. Uh, the site contains, uh, three existing residences, uh, accessory structures of one shop and one barn, a septic system and a existing domestic well. The proposed third residence will utilize the existing septic system as it has been since it is as built, um, as well as, uh, sharing the domestic well. The subject site has direct access to Road 156. The subject parcel was created legally, uh, no active violations. Uh, this came about when, uh, Mr. Ragsdale, um, applied for a permit for a new shop. Um, and that's when he was told that the third residence was never permitted. It existed before he purchased the property. The public notice.
This will bring the property into compliance, so it's not a new residence, it's existing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, a public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. Two comments were received, uh, one in favor of the project and one only opposing having more people move into the neighborhood. Um, no new people will be moving in. Um, I can't remember if it says mother or mother-in-law, um, has been living there for quite some time, so no new residences will be moving in. This and staff report? Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant who is here today?
Any questions for my fellow commissioners before I open up?
I, I've got a question from the council. Is there a way we could limit this to use for families and member?
It, it is in the AE 20 zone for the use permit. It's only, um, for family members or, um, or farm workers.
So it's already in the finding?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll invite the public to come forward this time to comment on this either for or against.
And remember to give a few minutes, remember to give a few minutes for the people listening on, online.
Okay, and then also for those of you listening, uh, will take a 60-second for you to call in after this gentleman.
Yes, my name is Bobby Ragsdale. Uh, I'm owner of the property of 26049, Road 156. Um, we purchased the property probably about eight years ago or so with it having three houses on it. We weren't told that when we bought it that it wasn't permitted for a house. And we bought it specifically because of that, because I have a disabled brother-in-law and sister-in-law that lives in one house. And my, I have a true mother-in-law quarters in the back. So, and she's, she's legally blind. And that's why me and my wife bought the property is for that. And we wanted to do everything right, get the permit, because I finally got eligible to build a shop. And I built a shop and they said it's not permitted properly for that, but they've been taking, charging taxes for quarters since 85. And that's when the house prop was moved in, it was 1985, in, in that area. So that's, I'm just trying to get everything final to get it all done and over with and do it right.
Sure. I can see this is no fault of yours.
Yeah.
Okay, my fellow commissioners, have any questions before we go on? Go ahead.
Yes, that's my mother, mother-in-law's.
And if there comes a time when she no longer needs it, it's not going to turn into a rental property?
It, uh, we don't have no desire for a rental property. If we do that, my, me and my wife might move back there because my son lives with us too.
Right.
He might take over the front house and just her and I move into the back.
Okay.
My wife don't want no rent or stuff, you know, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to say? I think.
Um, on some of the permit stuff I have is like I have to, they're wanting me to do an approach on that. Do we have to do that because it has been there so long already?
Let the staff address that, but.
Yes, uh, through the chair, um, you, you can discuss that with, uh, Public Works, but, uh, the whole idea behind the approach is, uh, any way we can make sure that trucks don't take apart our shoulders and our roadways, we greatly appreciate that. So, uh, after this, we can discuss with Public Works whether it's absolutely necessary or not in your situation and they can come out and take a look at it. But, uh, most times they say it is, is necessary because you, you can understand how trucks.
Yeah, yes, I understand.
Destroy our shoulders and we, it takes a lot, we have a lot of miles to take.
Yeah, yeah. Like get that done, that'd be the nicest place and the road would be the bumpy one.
Right, so if anybody can take care of their, their own shoulders, that's, we'll, we'll take care of the potholes.
Okay.
These are not really difficult to do and they usually generally benefit you also.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just at the expense, because I spent, you know, I spent all my money on my shop and I gotta take me a little to get it, little back up.
They'll give you the time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, just a thing to be aware of, one of the conditions that I'm reading here is that you have to get the septic system behind. There's going to be some expenses for you involved in this.
Okay.
Um, there's a few things that you probably want to discuss with staff. It's going to be an obligation.
Okay.
To get the permit finalized.
Okay, so we have, go get the septic.
Now, how long ago did you buy it?
It's been eight years, seven, eight years ago, actually. We.
So by law, uh, they should have pumped it and certified it at the time you purchased it.
On the back house, what the real estate agent told us, I do remember that, is there's no problem with the septic tank, don't bother it.
Don't count on real estate agents, okay?
We, we have had it pumped.
I'm one. He's one and he's one. By law, every septic tank is to be tested and certified that it works. So you might call him and remind him of that. I'm not giving you legal advice, but you're still going to have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, which we already had it pumped once before. I mean, we'd had it cleaned out and everything and that, we did, did do that probably about three, four years ago.
So call that same guy, that'll save you some money.
Okay.
Okay, or anything else? No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Staff's recommendation?
Is to approve.
So do I have?
Exemption, special use permit.
Closing the public hearing and asking for a motion to approve this project or disapprove. Someone like?
Are you going to leave it open for the call-ins?
We have no callers.
Okay.
So I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, section one five zero six one subsection B, subsection three, the common sense rule regarding a project that does, that does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and conditionally approve special use permit PSP twenty dash zero one three, subject to findings and conditions.
I'll stick to motion.
Okay.
You gotta push the button.
Push the button, Wayne says move. Okay, go ahead and vote.
Motion carried. Have a good day, Mr. Ragsdale. Okay, we'll move on to five B. Special use permit PSP two zero, two zero zero one three setback variance. PSP two zero zero one safety striping service categorical exemption and setback variance. PSV two zero dash zero one to allow an eighteen foot by sixty foot shade structure within the fifty foot building setback of road sixty-nine on a point seven five acre parcel in M-two heavy manufacturing zone inside the Goshen urban development boundary and Visalia urban boundary. Site is located on the corner of avenue three oh five and road sixty-nine in Goshen and April is our, going to give us our staff report and the public.
You need to load it on your screen. Okay, there we go. It's not, it's hovering, but it's not.
I think that road is also known in Goshen as Ivy, April.
Where we are going for, there we are, thank you.
Good morning Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioners, can you hear me? Okay. With a mask on, I wanted to make sure. My name is April Hill Planner Three, Resource Management Agency, Economic Development and Planning. Safety, safety striping asks for authorization of a shade structure within the building line setback of road sixty-nine. If they would allow, this would allow the construction of a open-sided shade structure for a recreational vehicle. The application results from the building permit application, no code, code violations. This is a hearing notification map. Project was noticed according to the law with a ten day comment period, no dispute. As noted, property is within the Goshen urban development boundary, the Visalia urban area boundary and the Visalia airport safety zone four, outer approach departure zone. The county's updated comprehensive airport land use plan states that manufacturing process land uses are allowed in zone four if processes carried out in a controlled environment. Project site is subject to the county city of Visalia's memorandum of understanding which says small standalone non-residential projects smaller than two acres do not need to meet city standards. As of today, the city had not responded to a consultation request. The three-quarter acre parcel is in the M-two heavy manufacturing zone surrounded by M-one light manufacturing zone properties with state highway ninety-nine to the southwest and properties zoned R-two multifamily residential and C-two MU general commercial mixed-use properties to the north. The project meets the findings for setback variance. One that adhering to this current setback regulation would cause practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. The proposed shade structure would be between the metal service buildings and road sixty-nine, which is not county maintained. Project would not disturb public safety or welfare of the community. The approval does, does not grant special privileges and the variance does not authorize a use that's not allowed in the zone and the variance is consistent with the general plan.
April, I'm looking at exhibit A and it shows it's on the corner of Ivy and Goshen Avenue three oh five and this one shows the next road to the east of Ivy, so.
Road sixty-nine has.
Same as Ivy Road, is that correct?
Yes, it's the.
But the slide you gave last time would indicate this is east of that parcel.
I think our exhibit A.
West side of road sixty-nine.
I think our exhibit A got kind of cut off there on the, on the east side.
Okay, can you go back one slide? It says site, but is it actually the site to the west?
Site is to the west and road sixty-nine is to the east.
April, he's just trying to clarify that the site plan itself, exhibit A says I, the location of the project's on Ivy Road, which is to the west of the site, so is the exhibit A incorrect or is the zoning map different than the site plan?
Exhibit A is, is correct and just as you said, cut off, the, on the east side is where the shade structure is going to be built, not next to Ivy, but next to road sixty-nine.
Okay.
Right, so the.
Those alleys don't exist anymore, so that's abandoned. So is the property demised on three oh five?
Yes.
Goshen, so. Okay.
Yeah, if you look at the aerial photograph on page forty-seven, you can see that there is building into the alleyway. Yeah, there you go.
And I have site photos that show the, a little bit later on and in your packet that showed the actual, what, what road sixty-nine looks like in that part, in that part of town.
Okay, I got it. So road sixty-nine Ivy are different roads?
Yes.
That's okay.
The company takes the whole block, most of the block. They have their, their two metal buildings on that particular parcel, a parking area for service trucks and storage C-trains. Surrounding properties contain a cabinet shop to the south, a commercial warehouse, auto repair shop, painting facility, residences to the north and highway ninety-nine to the west. There's a site plan that is not cut off.
There we go, so.
Got it.
See, but, so the proposed shades are going to be, it's cut off on mine, but it says proposed, says P R O. Is that?
If you.
Directly east of the metal building, existing metal building?
Yes.
Yeah, right there.
Kane Drive is road sixty-nine.
Okay, yeah, see, I have nothing beyond that on mine here, so I can't see. I can kind of see it there a little bit.
It's in the back, of the back of the agenda packet is the site plan that is, does not.
And then right, right to the north there where those, those covered covers over the C-trains, are those also in, encroaching or what? Or are those just temporary, they don't even count?
On the north side of the site plan, there's the northeast corner.
The storage, storage C-trains, they, I believe successfully got their building permits without being questioned on the setback and I'm checking in the staff report.
They may not, they may, they may not qualify as, they're temporary, right? Temporary?
They are required to get building permits. And building, building department did require as a condition of approval that the applicant get, get two, a couple more building permits for structures that were, that are, that were built inside, like an office, an office area that was built inside a metal building.
Okay, I was, my question was on those, those temporary covers over, over the C-trains, right at the northeast corner.
Have the building department look at those because that's, they did not have building permits that I can see in the records.
Okay.
I wouldn't think the building permits required, would you? They're just.
Yeah, they, they are required for C-trains. Unless they are truly temporary in nature, C-trains do require building permits.
They, they do become permanent, don't they?
They do. So then the question is, do we amend the variance to add the, the one C-train that looks like in the setback already?
Right.
Right.
Looks like there's four or five in the aerial.
In the aerial, yeah. But those are the two that would be permitted, those other ones could be more temporary in nature based on the site plan before us today. So you could make the recommendation to add, and one of them looks like it's in the setback area, the other one further to the west is not, the one right on the property line.
Right. I think it's probably appropriate to add a permit to bring that into compliance with the, with the permit.
Correct.
Might we also expand the setback variance to cover those, that one structure, that one C-train?
Right.
Thank you. And here's the, the promised photos of the site, of the site. First from avenue three oh five and road sixty-nine with businesses, businesses parking area. And this is as they were preparing to grade, level the area for putting in the concrete slab for the shade structure. And main, the applicants termed the road sixty-nine a maintained, an unmaintained alley. It is dedicated to the county, but not maintained by the county. Project has been determined to be categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, consistent with state SEQA guidelines pursuant to section one five three zero one class one pertaining to existing structure, existing facilities and section one five three zero three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. Project is a setback variance that will not result in any changes in land use or density. Site is not located in an environmentally sensitive area. Conditions of approval are included from the fire department and building department. No conditions required by environmental health or public works. This ends staff's presentation.
Any questions from my fellow commissioners before I ask members of the public or on the telephone? I'm going to give sixty seconds, so if you've got something on your mind, you can add it in sixty seconds, is that okay?
I got it.
You got it, okay.
I got it.
Okay, we're going to take sixty seconds starting now to see if there's anyone wants to call in and comment on this project. Maybe we could get some music like Jeopardy or something.
There you go. You could sing, Bill.
I could.
Silence is golden.
Yeah. Okay, it looks like in sixty seconds has passed and is there anyone that would like to comment that's here on this project? If not, I will close the public comment and move on to the staff's recommendation. Is that first or second?
The staff recommendation?
Yeah, does that come after I close?
After you close.
Okay, go for it. Staff recommendation is?
It's on the board.
Okay, but usually the staff says. If my fellow commissioners, okay, somebody like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, sections one five three zero one, one five three zero three and conditionally approve a setback variance number PSV two oh dash zero zero one with the addition that the, there's an additional, going to have to be a setback variance for the.
C-train.
For the C-train and, and needs to come into compliance.
Hey, do I have a?
Need to.
Push your button.
I gotta get back to the screen there, don't I? Okay?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, vote. Motion carried, thank you very much April.
Thank you Commissioners.
We'll go to item five C, a setback variance tentative subdivision map T S M two zero dash zero two. Smee Homes Forester Weber LLC categorical exemption tentative subdivision map T S M twenty dash zero zero two. A final map is required to subdivide, subdivide ten point four zero acres into eight parcels that range from forty-nine thousand one fifty-five to fifty-two thousand seven seven six square feet located in a rural residential forty-three thousand minimum RA forty-three zone. The site is located approximately six hundred thirty-four feet north of Linda Vista Avenue, approximately seven hundred feet east of Dillon Court, north of Porterville and our, we have Sandy. How you been Sandy, you liking it here now?
Well, I've been, you know, living here in Tulare County for ten years now.
Anything you don't like about the people you work for?
Well, I definitely like the shorter commute. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Sandy Roper Planner Four with the Resource Management Agency and the application for your consideration is tentative subdivision map number twenty dash zero zero two. The applicant is Smee Homes Incorporated and the surveyor or agent for the project is Forester Weber and Associates. The tentative subdivision map proposes to divide ten point zero four acres into eight parcels that range in size from forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet to fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six square feet. You know, so these would be parcels that are a little bit more than an acre in size. The project is located in the rural residential forty-three thousand square foot minimum zone or the RA forty-three zone. Again, the agent is Forester Weber and Associates. The project site is located approximately six hundred and thirty-four feet north of Linda Vista Avenue and approximately seven hundred feet east of Dillon Court, north of the city of Porterville. The application includes an exception that's been requested from the requirement to install curbs and gutters. In addition, there's also a request for an exception concerning exceeding the six hundred and sixty foot maximum length of a cul-de-sac in the non-mountainous area and a final map is required. On the screen now is the hearing notification map. This, the notice was published in the Sun Gazette on June tenth of two thousand twenty. The next map is the vicinity map. The project site is located approximately six hundred and thirty-four feet north of Linda Vista, again approximately seven hundred feet east of Dillon Court, just north of the city of Porterville. On the screen now is the aerial photograph which shows that the site is vacant, it's also level and not currently under cultivation.
Back, could you back up Sandy, just a quick question, how do they plan on?
How do they plan on accessing that from Linda Vista to the... I don't see any direct access to the roads.
If we move further ahead and get to the site plan, the site plan actually shows the access.
Okay.
So do you want me to jump ahead and show you that slide now?
No, I'll wait. Go ahead with your presentation.
The subject site is located within the Porterville urban area boundaries, and Figure ES5 of the Porterville Area Community Plan lists the land use designation as very low-density PF4 of the Tulare County General Plan states that the land lying between the urban development boundary and the urban area boundary will generally have an agricultural land use designation or rural residential land use designation in conformity with land use policy LU3.8 for rural residential interface. Tulare County Agreement Number 26453 with the city of Porterville requires the county to apply the policies under goal PF4A in addition to the policies already in place under goal PF4 to the city and any land within the county adopted area urban development boundary, or the CACU DB of Porterville, and the county adopted area urban boundary, CACUAB, for Porterville. Section 5BI of Agreement 26453 requires the following: One, the county shall not approve any development that's inconsistent or incompatible with city plan lines. Staff's response is that the proposed project is consistent and compatible with city plan lines. Number two, in addition, the county will consider the city's general plan and adopted facility plans during the development process. Staff's response is that the city's general plan and adopted facility plans have been considered by the county during the development process. On January 16 of 2020, a project review consultation notice and fact sheet was sent to the city of Porterville for this, for PRC 19-068, for the proposed subdivision of 10.04 acres into eight parcels. The city of Porterville sent a, sent a letter commenting on PRC 19068 stating that the city would not block or oppose the development of the subdivision in the county. The city's letter also stated that if the applicant desired connection to the city's water system, then annexation would be the way forward. This application is proposing individual domestic wells for each of the proposed parcels, and it does not propose connection to the city's water system. Therefore, annexation would not be required. On April 29, the project review consultation notice for tentative subdivision map 20002 was sent to the city of Porterville, and the city has not responded to that consultation Number three, the county will apply the county's Rural Valley Lands Plan checklist, or something similar mutually agreed to by the city and the county, to propose county general plan amendments or rezonings in the CACUAB for Porterville. Staff's response is that a RLVP analysis has been prepared for the proposed project. Staff initiated a RL, excuse me, RVLP checklist and backup statement for, you know, the board to consider and the commission, consistent with Agreement 26453 and PF4.19, which resulted in a total of 13 points for the proposed project. RVLP 1.4 states that if a number of points accumulated is 11 or less, the parcel may be considered for non-agricultural zoning. The parcel receiving 12 to 16 points shall be determined to fall within a gray area in which no clear-cut decision is readily apparent. In such instances, the planning commission and board of supervisors shall make a decision based on the unique circumstances pertaining to the particular parcel of land, including factors not covered by this system. It should be noted that a zone change is not needed for this application since the existing zoning for the property is RA43. Consistent with PF4.19, new development in the city's urban area boundary would be subject to adopted plan lines and setback standards. Number four, where small, standalone, non-urban projects are proposed, the county need not apply the city's standards and designations, but will apply city utility and street master plan setbacks. For the purpose of Agreement Number 26453, standalone, non-urban projects are defined as residential projects of four or fewer lots on non-residential, or, excuse me, or non-residential projects smaller than two acres. Staff's response is that the proposed project would result in eight parcels that are all smaller than two acres. Therefore, the project is not a small, standalone, non-urban project, and the county is required to apply the city's standards and designations. PF4.21 of the Tulare County General Plan states that as an exception to the county policies, that the Rural Valley Lands Plan is only advisory within the county adopted urban area boundaries. The county may work with an individual city to provide that the requirements of the RVLP will apply to applications for special use permits. Variances considered under Government Code 65906, or to the extent allowed by law, divisions of land within a CACUAB, except that those areas that overlap with the county unincorporated urban development boundary, a hamlet development boundary, or a quarter plan area, such a permit, variance, or division of land will be reviewed in light of impacts on such regional concerns as water and sewage, sewage disposal availability, and preservation of transportation and utility quarters. Since the county and the city have entered into Agreement 26453, a RVLP analysis is required for the proposed project. And as I mentioned earlier, staff initiated the RVLP checklist and backup statement, and it resulted in a total of 13 points. In such instances, the commission and the board shall make a decision based on the unique circumstances, as I said earlier, pertaining to the particular parcel of land, including factors not covered by this system. It should be noted, again, that a zone change is not needed since the project is proposed on property that's zoned RA43. The tentative subdivision map is consistent with relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan, including planning framework goal one, land use goal one, LU3.4, PF4A, PF4.1, PF4-19, PF4.21, HS6.8, private water supply, WR2.9, private wells, PFS3.1, private sewage disposal standards, RVLP 1.6 checklist, and ADD1.14, right-to-farm noticing. The subject site is zoned RA43. The rural residential zone is intended for one-family dwellings of a permanent character placed in permanent locations, and one-family manufactured homes installed on a foundation, private garages to accommodate not more than three cars, transitional supportive housing, growing and harvesting of field crops, and the raising of farm animals. The property is not within a Williamson Act contract. The Tulare County Public Works Engineering Branch Assessor, Environmental Health Services Division, Fire Department, City of Porterville, and Caltrans, you know, have responded to a consultation request which was sent on April 29. The diagram on the screen now is the existing zoning map which shows the project in the RA43 Zone District. And the diagram on the screen now is the site plan. The site has access to Linda Vista Avenue via an existing 60-foot wide private road that is paved. Linda Vista Avenue is a county-maintained road. The existing road, you know, currently, you know, has a, you know, cul-de-sac in this location, and the application would extend the private road north with the cul-de-sac at the north end of the subdivision, providing access to all eight of the parcels.
Sandy, could you go back there? I'm a little confused. How you get to the site from Linda Vista?
It's a private road.
Is there a road there already?
Yes, he says paved with a cul-de-sac.
Well, let me, where's my aerial?
I think we have it.
We don't have an aerial?
I didn't see it.
I went back to the aerial, and there is an existing subdivision that is south of the proposed project site.
I see.
And that existing subdivision extended the private road to the north. Unfortunately, that was done after the aerial image was taken, so it does not show up. You know, however, you know, that road has been extended to the, you know, southern boundary of the project site, and the proposed project would extend that again further to the north, terminating in the cul-de-sac, which would provide access to all eight of the parcels Staff recommendation would be that the planning commission hold a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, recommend that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines, and Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve tentative subdivision map number 20-002 to subdivide the 10.04 acre parcel into like eight lots, north of Porterville with two exceptions, and a final map is required. This concludes the staff report unless there are any questions.
Do we have any questions from my fellow commissioners?
Yes, Sandy, one question here. I was reading through there, it looks like the applicant is pressing the city for annexation and wanting to use city water and, and then be annexed into the city. And the city of Porterville seems to have a few issues with the way this is designed, particularly with the cul-de-sac on the deal and the lack of requiring curbs and gutters on this, so, I don't, is the applicant, the applicant's not here, is he?
The applicant should be waiting online, did they?
He didn't want to speak, and he just asked for how to listen online, unless he's going to call in again right now.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Respond to him and say if he can respond to that question.
He's not on the line.
Oh, he's not?
He called into the office asking how to get online to listen, but he didn't want to speak.
Sandy, so going back, part of your presentation, you said there is water connection already to the existing homes just to the south?
Earlier, I was talking about the previous PRC that was submitted prior to this tentative subdivision map, and the city of Porterville commented on that, that they would not oppose or block the project, and they stated that if they were going to want to connect to the city for services such as water, that they would need to annex. And my understanding is that the applicant had, you know, contacted the city to inquire about possibly connecting and obtaining services from the city, and when they were informed about the requirement in order to annex, in order to obtain those services, you know, subsequently, when they submitted the tentative subdivision map, that proposal did not include any request to connect to the city for any services whatsoever, and instead would rely on individual domestic wells and septic systems. And as a result, that would not trigger any requirement to annex. If the applicant should change their mind and want to connect, you know, to the city's services, then they would need to contact the city and go through the process to annex in order to receive those services. But at this time, the application does not include any such proposal.
We do have the applicant back on the line. Do you want to speak to him?
Wait, just tell him, don't go anywhere. Okay. Which is your report, is that correct?
Um...
You can come back.
I believe there were, you know, two questions, and that was the answer to the first question, and what was the second question?
But ask the applicant questions.
Yeah.
But you can come back and...
I was confused because the applicant seemed to be pressing the city for annexation, and at the same time here, he's asking to waiver for curbs and gutters. It's kind of, kind of have, can't have it both ways, I don't think.
Oh, yeah, and in relation to curbs and gutters, the reason for the request, you know, for the exception in relation to curbs and gutters, is because there's not a drainage outfall for the water to flow to. And installing curbs and gutters would be problematic and result in diverting stormwater runoff onto other properties, which would be a problem. And for that reason, the request was made for the exception concerning curbs and gutters.
Okay, well, that kind of makes sense. And then, I guess, city of, city of Porterville's got the power, if they're going to annex it, to require to put in sewer and water.
Well, and just to address the question about why annexation, the annexation would be because that's what the city requires for connection. They could have done it through extraterritorial agreement. Obviously, from the letter, they're, they're not considering that, so, and there's multiple reasons at this time that this project, especially since the county's saying they're not going to, the city's saying they're not going to oppose it, that we can't approve this in the county, and they can always annex it later if they choose to. But...
Subdivisions that don't have country set, that don't have curbs and gutters, including yours, and so the water drains onto, legally, you can't drain your water on somebody else's property, so it keeps it all on site.
Well, my only concern was that it seemed like he was gonna, we were going to permit this thing without curbs and gutters, and then he was going to go right in and ask for annexation, and that didn't seem very fair to the city at that point in time because of where, it's not the city's standards.
Yeah, but that's with Porterville, but anyway, that's a whole nother. So I'll let you come back, Sandy, but I'm going to, I want the applicant is waiting online, so I'm going to open the public comment on this, and we'll start with bringing the applicant online. If you can hear me, give us your name and address for the record, please.
They're ready to transfer the call. Let's give it a moment.
Okay, I'm ready.
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Sir, good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the Planning Commission meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning. This is the Chair, Bill Whitlitz. Please continue.
Ken Turner with Smea Homes, 4524 West Lark Court, Visalia. I've been listening online. The only comment I have is about the annexations to Porterville. We tried to go that route, but we have abandoned that route. The city did not want to accept our situation over there on Linda Vista. So we're gonna do, I think the guy, sorry, I don't know who was saying it. We're gonna do the individual wells and septic systems.
Okay, I think some of my fellow commissioners may have some questions, so...
No, that answers my question. If you're abandoning your efforts for annexation, then that answers my question then.
Any other questions?
Also asking for sewer connectivity.
We abandoned all that. We tried to tie into the city of Porterville. They didn't want to accept our project at this time. I don't know if you guys know, but they have a water problem in Porterville. I don't know if that was behind it or what the situation was, but...
Sandy, is this a parcel contiguous to the boundary, city boundary? On the map? Or is it away from the boundary?
That was a good one, Sandy. Go back to that. Right there. You can see the city of Porterville.
Is it right on the boundary or is it off the boundary?
Through the chair, you can see the white areas that say Porterville on those. That's the... This is at least, oh, I don't know, quarter mile, half mile away from the city boundary.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
Just wanted to ask again. I thought I heard a response, but what was the reason the city gave, if any, for not wanting to annex this property?
They cited the water issue and they cited that they didn't like our street. We had, we're, they mentioned earlier that the street goes all the way through now and the satellite picture is outdated. We're the ones that extended the street and we're the ones that built the subdivision just to the south.
The street goes through completely, so divides it in half, or it stops at the long cul-de-sac?
It stops at the current boundaries for the project you guys are considering. Is that what you're asking me?
So to, through the chair, the...
To the north to the current project that we're looking at.
So on that map, you can see the broken lines of the existing cul-de-sac. And they're proposing to extend it further into the property site. We've, you know, they... I don't think there's any really good solution the city would like as far as extending roads through and around this project. And like Ken just said, they've already built these previous subdivisions just to the south. So they're just extending it further.
And it's the same subdivision, so...
Yes.
Sandy, you might put the aerial up again for Maria and then maybe she didn't show exactly where, even though it's not showing. Maria, you see the, that little short road that comes off Linda Vista and Dead Ends right there?
Yeah, I'm kind of blind right now, but yeah.
Well, they say now that that road is extended clear to the property line.
It actually goes beyond with a cul-de-sac into it.
So, but there is an existing road that goes there. They just put that in. It doesn't show on the aerial. It's been done since this aerial was taken.
Is this the only planned means of egress or entrance to the properties?
Yes.
Yes.
That's something I'm concerned about. I thought it was going all the way through for some reason, but no.
These are like large lots, so there's a total, what, twelve lots on that cul-de-sac, that street, including the eight new ones?
Right.
There's four existing and that adds eight more. Twelve one-acre lots.
Here.
Yes.
Manufactured homes?
Manufactured?
Yeah.
Stick-framed, is that what you mean?
No.
We're gonna build, we're gonna build...
Pre-fab, pre-fabricated manufactured.
No, we're building homes, single-family residences on slab concrete, zip-framed.
On a slab?
Yes.
Okay, if there's no...
They'll be nice homes.
If you don't, if you have any other comments, go ahead. If there's none, I'll... Just stay on and listen, okay, in case you want to comment at the end. But I'm going to, at this time, close the public testimony, go on to the staff's recommendation. And then after the staff makes a recommendation, I'll give the Planning Commission a comment, any changes or... So, staff's recommendation is?
Staff was recommending that the commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and the State SEQUA Guidelines, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And approve tentative subdivision map number 20-002 to subdivide the 10.04 acre parcel into eight lots, north of Porterville with two exceptions, and a final map is required.
I'll close the public comment, but is there any further comment by my fellow commissioners?
I have comments. I don't know if somebody else wants to go first or you want me to just say?
Who wants to comment?
So, a couple of things concern me. The biggest one of them, and yes, I'm known as, you know, fire person or whatever you want to call me, but I am very concerned about the length of the cul-de-sac with the number of homes in the area and not having an alternative exit. I understand cul-de-sacs in general, but this one is, sounds or seems very long to me. So for me, it's a safety concern. The other thing I got, because that was clarified, but I had a question about the curbs and gutters. Understand why we can't have curbs and gutters now. I did not, you know, resolve my issue with the length of the cul-de-sac. So that, that safety is a big thing for me.
Okay. John?
My concern is just if we already have a water problem in Porterville, we're gonna dig more wells and make more septics. Maybe this isn't the time to proceed with a development quite like this.
Anybody else?
I think the water problem is to the other side of Porterville. I haven't heard too much on this side.
The east side.
Staff want to comment on the questions or...
Yeah, I'll just quickly answer the question about the length of the cul-de-sac. And the fire department didn't have another comment about the length of the cul-de-sac, right, Sandy?
No, they did not, and...
Neither did the engineering department?
No.
So they would grant the exception. And we have many cul-de-sacs in this county. There is no limit necessarily to the amount of units you could put at the end of the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sacs and PVAEs are used for apartment complexes as well. And they often get the exception, especially as you get further into the property. As long as they have that turnaround at the end, which a lot of cul-de-sacs in this county or PVAEs might not always have. This isn't inconsistent to what's been approved in this county historically. And again, the fire department didn't have any concerns or raise any concerns about that.
Yeah, also, Sandy, if you can put the aerial back up for me there. Look at that Dillon Road there. It's darn near as long as that cul-de-sac.
That's probably right, right at about the 600.
Be about a quarter mile or so, huh?
Yeah.
So that one's probably in compliance then, huh?
Yeah, that one is. So they're just asking for the exception. And as mentioned, these lots are sizable with driveways and everything else. So there's other turnaround areas within this cul-de-sac area enough not to necessarily warrant a second access point. And generally, when we're not in the foothills, when we're on the flat grounds, we don't... There is alternative means to egress a property for people. So this isn't necessarily one of those conditions where it's state fire hazard areas, so... The other issue about water is, yes, East Porterville generally is more of an area of concern where the lower-lying water levels are. And the city, it brings up that issue of their water. But again, they're not, they didn't send any further comments back to us saying that that is a concern or an issue of this project. They don't want to block this project for water reasons or anything else like that, so... You know, as far as staff's concerned, this isn't unusually regular project for the county. And there's oftentimes, we do not, even though we require curb-gutter sidewalk within our urban development boundaries, there's oftentimes with the commercial projects and other projects that, you know, we go through the Planning Commission and we require it. And then Public Works turns around later and says, it's gonna create a drainage issue. We can't require this. So in this case, again, Public Works didn't really have a concern or an issue because it's pretty consistent with a lot of our subdivisions in the county.
Can I respond to that or ask further questions? You okay? You okay with that? Okay, so I get the curb and gutter part. I'm fine with the response, although I want everything to be, you know, perfect, et cetera. That's not gonna happen. But as far as fire, I'm looking at the letter under Charlie Norman's letterhead that was signed by Gilbert Portillo, Fire Inspector Plans Examiner. And they don't say we don't want the project. That's not my point. But they're talking about, and I'm just trying to figure out how this is gonna happen, they want current fire flow water supply to be met before construction begins. I'm just curious how that's gonna happen with wells as opposed to a city connection. They want water storage tanks and fire department connections to comply with the NFPA and all those standards. They want a pressurized community fire hydrant system to comply with the standards and California Fire Code appendices. And I'm just wondering how all that's gonna happen on well water.
Yeah, and to answer that question, the community fire, again, similar to more recent subdivisions we approved, they will have a water tank on-site to cover and to make sure that the standards are met for the flow rates per house. So you, I think we'll see one of these fairly soon here in East Tulare, where they have the tanks on-site and the water lines are all connected to each one of the houses from that water tank. So it's not, the wells aren't supporting the fire flow the water tank would be.
I just, I just did want to support Porterville and it's a very sophisticated water tank and fire system. And the county will not allow them to complete their project until the fire system is in period.
Right.
Has held my client up for months because he's tried to fight it. But it's a very, you know, it's big and it's complicated.
Is this a single tank or does each home have their own tank?
No, it'd be one big tank and...
Then who fills it?
Smea is competent to build it. They hire somebody who does that kind of work, but...
Who fills the tank or where does it get filled from?
I said, who's responsibility is to fill it up? Smea.
Yeah. They actually come out, the fire department does, to check to see that it works. And you better have the right transfer valves or they'll kick it out, so... No, I mean, my client got in a huge argument with them and all I could say was the fire department's right. Do what they tell you to do.
Right.
No, we have a good fire department, so...
But how does that work with the hydrant?
What now?
How does all that work with the hydrant? It's a pressurized fire hydrant.
All tied together. It all comes off the tank.
Comes out of the tank.
They have a pressurized pump that pumps all the water.
So, somebody uses, somebody has a fire, they use the tank. Who fills it up again?
It's on, it's on like a float. It just continues to fill.
But from where?
It is its own well.
They have to have a well.
Well, is it all eight of the wells contribute to the fire?
There's a well specifically designated to fill that tank. The others are domestic.
Do these wells need to be all, is there an application process to dig these wells for each individual well?
Well, the county, yes. All public, all private water wells have to go through environmental health.
So if they dig one, let's say there's an inconsistency and the wells are different and different groundwater levels, how does that affect the project then?
The, well, they'll test each one of the wells for their, making sure that they're compliant with the environmental health requirements. And it's usually water quality requirements, but they make sure they pump at the domestic rates required before they approve them at environmental health.
So that's before they start digging the project, they'll put all the wells in?
They'll put the wells in, well, even still, when it gets down to occupation. I mean, those wells will be in place before we sign off on occupation. And same with the fire department, so... Yeah, there's quite a bit of work in front of them as far as coming into compliance with the fire, the fire department. Yeah, and we haven't seen too many, again, too many builders in this county able to provide all the tanks required and all the well, meet all the well requirements. So, since Smea's already building homes in the county and under these standards, so they're already out there, north part of Visalia.
It's like any, any building that you build, it's called the occupancy. The building department will not approve that occupancy until that tank is there, filled with water and working. And so as far as the wells for each individual site, that may come at the time they build the home. But this fire system will go. And if it's not functional, then they can build a house, but it won't be approved for people to live in. So they're smarter than that, so...
Through the chair.
Yes.
The fire department requirements state that the pressurized community system and, you know, the water tank, they need to be in place in order to apply, to provide the fire flow. And the fire department will require that the fire flow be in place before construction begins, not at the time that the certificate of occupancy is done. You know, so the system has to be in place before they can start building any of the houses. They don't wait until the houses are built to put the system in place to provide the fire flow. The fire department wants that in place so that, you know, once construction starts, if there's a fire, then they're gonna have the water available in order to fight the fire. You know, if the fire flow isn't there until after construction is complete, then in the event of a fire, they wouldn't have that water available to fight the fire.
But I'm just telling you that sometimes the building does get built, but they will not allow you to occupy it until that fire system works. So, ideal world, what you're saying is true. But, and this may be a community water system, but it's only community as far as fire protection. It's not part of the domestic system at all, so...
Is it going to be considered a, I'm just looking up some definitions here, private fire hydrant or is it a public fire hydrant?
Be public. Well, I don't know who owns the system, but...
Yeah, that's the question is, because there's different standards.
Doesn't really, it has to be the Tulare County Fire Department's requirements. So I can take you around and show you different ones, but the county fire department is very serious about this. And they make life miserable for you if you don't do it, so... They have too big investment here not to... if you don't do it, so. They have too big investment here not to do it, so when they put the streets in, they'll run the fire hydrants and space them according to the county's standard, and so I'm confident that it'll happen, only because I know the county is Charlie Norman and doesn't stutter when it comes to this, these kinds of things, so...
Through the chair. Um, the system would be privately owned, operated, and maintained, and the water would be available, and the fire department would have the ability to access the water, uh, through the fire hydrants that would be installed, um, but it would not be a system owned and maintained by the county.
Correct, right. But you know who enforces it, is the county is out there, the fire department, making sure that it's functional, and so...
Yes, the, the fire department would inspect to, uh, confirm that it meets all of their standards, um, before they would allow, uh, construction to begin, and if construction were to begin before that had been completed, you know, then the fire department does have the ability to take enforcement action in order to, uh, you know, enforce the requirements of the subdivision.
But the biggest hammer they have is, you can't sell the house you just built until it's functional, and nobody wants to tie that kind of money up.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's, yeah, it's, it's not, you know, whether it's public or county, uh, it's, the fire departments, and they're very serious about that, so...
Is there a homeowners association that, uh, associated with this?
There's no common...
Hmm?
There's no common, um...
So the, 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 the homeowners don't, uh, are not responsible for that water, uh, tank system?
I don't know that for sure. Is the applicant still online?
Yes.
Are you forming an association because of the fire system?
No.
Okay, so it's not...
So, so if maintenance is required, who pays for the maintenance?
The owner.
If it's not county controlled, then who, who's on the hook for maintenance and repair?
The owner.
The who?
The owner.
Which owner?
Property owner.
There's twelve owners.
All of them.
So it is a community system, and so there's going to be some, you're going to have to have some kind of a, a, uh, public report...
Yeah.
And association to maintain the fire system.
Yeah, there's got to be some agreement on this thing.
Do we need to make that a condition, or is that supposed to happen by itself?
Real estate kind of controls that. If there's anything that's all pub, you know, uh, there's any common interests, it's called a common interest subdivision, they require him to have a public report and an association, so, and they have to have a budget with reserves and, um, so, yeah.
Through the chair.
Pretty nice homes around here, and I assume these would be too. Are all these on private wells, or these annexed into Porterville, the ones you see in the area?
Well, like you saw from the, um, zoning map, these are all, uh, privately, uh, owned, not necessarily connected to the city water. I, I don't know for certain if the city was willing to grant them extraterritorial agreements or not back in the day, uh, but for the most part, it looks like, uh, wet wells in Septic out there, given the large, large estates.
Typically, what happens, once they create this system, Cal Water or one of the water companies will buy it, so it's, it has some real value, but, um...
Well, and like the, uh, Ken saying, I mean, they don't necessarily have to have a community water tank, they can go with individualized wells, so they wouldn't necessarily have to go that route. Either way, they, what Sandy's saying is that, for the most part, the fire department does require anymore of these projects to meet the, uh, fire flows standard, so they already have to have one tank in place, but they could also use a, pretty much, a, a water truck, uh, to handle the fire flows while they are building, but that, that last line, that all single-family residents shall have a fire suppression system designed and installed by a licensed professional, um, regardless, is the occupation aspect that we, we look at, and, uh, these houses, uh, meet, meet those requirements before we ever get there, so. Uh, it's really, um, nothing we have to control as fire, as far as the tentative map itself. Um, these are more, uh, the building standards, but the, uh, and, and we accept those as the building standards, but the, um, how they, uh, meet that demand i- is up to the, the builder themselves.
So, um, Aaron, question on the fire hydrant thing, because I'm kind of stuck on that, um, is if there's no association here, because I thought I heard, um, the builder's rep say there's not an association, or I heard somebody say, but, um, if there's no association to maintain the community fire hydrant that's private, um...
If, if they build it that way, they could do individualized systems as well, but yes.
For the fire, pressurized fire hydrant?
Fire hydrants.
Hydrants, okay. Um, well, my question was going to be, is that going to fall back on the county to maintain or fix if these individual homes cannot come to an agreement about who's paying what or when, or if they're not capable of paying to fix?
Uh, a-again, that, you know, that's, um, um, like Ken just said, that's up to the individual owners. At that, at that point, all the developer could do is build the system in, and no, it would not fall back on the, the county to fix that. The fire department would put that onus up to the owners of these properties.
There, there will be an association. It's a common interest subdivision. It's real estate law, but, pardon?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the comment letter from the Public Works Division, uh, does have a statement that the subdivider shall provide for an assessment district for the maintenance of the public streets and roadways within the boundaries of the subdivision. Approval of this tenis, tentative map shall be conditioned so that the subdivider provides for said assessment district or other acceptable funding mechanism before recordation of the final map. You know, so there's definitely going to have to be an assessment district, and, you know, in addition to maintenance of the streets and roadways, uh, you know, it would make sense that the assessment district should also provide for the maintenance of the, uh, tank and the hydrant system.
Well, before, before, before we get ahead of ourselves, uh, what, what'd you say, Ken?
I just wanted to say, it's very common practice in the county, and we've, we, as Aaron mentioned, we've built in the county quite a bit. Uh, it's been a, it's been a law or a rule or for, for a long time, that, uh, at least three or four years, if not longer, for every house we build in the county, and we build quite a few on larger houses and stuff, on larger plots of land, you have to have that storage tank that everybody's referencing, it's fed by the well, um, and I'm not even sure if there's a hydrant or some way, I don't know, I'm not sure how the fire department taps into it, whether it's a hydrant or some other mechanism, but on the four lots to the south of this project, they all have individual fire suppression tanks, is what they're called.
Right.
Um, the owners are responsible for them. For this one, uh, we're, we're forming a subdivision because it's eight lots, it's four lots, um, it would be, right now, the plan would be to do the same thing. Um, we've reached out to the fire department for a, a way to, uh, to make a community well and a community fire suppression tank. If that doesn't happen, it'll be individual, like, just like the lots to the south and every other lot we've built in the county for four or five years, um, out in the country like this. Um, we haven't finalized that yet, there won't be an HOA, there probably will be a, some sort of district to pay for it if that's what ends up happening, but that's where we're at right now.
So, so...
They have to give a public report because it's more than four lots, so...
Right.
And so you're going to have to submit some kind of plan to the DRE to get that public report correct.
Right, and the plan is at the moment to do individual sorts, uh, fire suppression tanks.
So, so if they do the community system, then most likely they would form a HOA. Um, the, the county has never done an assessment district to, for, for fire, um, purposes, but the, uh, what he's talking about is they have the, uh, well, like we do for, um, most of our new second or third residences out in the foothill, uh, where we do, foothills where we start to require the, the tanks that haven't been there historically, um, the, the fire department does have the hookup, uh, available to hook up directly to the tank, so. But, uh, you know, if, uh, if they choose to go the community route, um, then you're, you're right, Chair, they would have to go through the DRE, um...
They have to go through the DRE no matter what, because it's more than four lots, so...
Or what. So, the, um, but as far as forming a homeowners association or going that route...
So I think we should, um, move along on this, and if, if you disagree, then you can vote against it, but, uh, I think, uh, close the, um...
Is that an earthquake?
Yeah. Pardon?
Yes, earthquake.
It sure was in Porterville.
Okay, so we'll close the, the public comment and move on to the planning commission?
Woo!
Coming back.
It's a nice one.
Heard he is. Glad they just reinforced this here in here.
Desk.
This way.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's to earthquake standards.
Well, I think somebody else is weighing in on this conversation.
God, huh? Do I have a, um, does someone like to make a, a motion at this time to either approve or disapprove this project?
I, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to recommend the board supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the environmental, California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve TSM 20-002 to subdivide the 10.04 acre parcel into eight lots north of Porterville with two exceptions, and a final map is required.
Do I have a second, please?
Does not let up.
Are you going to make a second? Can I make a second?
No.
Sir? Second it. Vote? So the motion was not carried. Someone like to make another motion? You have to have cause, okay? Do we make a motion to disapprove?
Do we need that? Do we need a motion to...
No, you don't need a motion to disapprove, but, uh, we do need to come back with, uh, findings for, for that, since it's, uh, right now, the, uh, motion is, uh, staff's recommendation was to approve with findings.
Um, through the chair. Uh, in the subdivision map act, there are specific findings that would have to be made in order to deny an application, and, you know, if there were a motion to deny, um, staff would need to go through, you know, each of those, and the commission, and the commission would have to be able to make each of those findings in order to deny. If the commission cannot make any of the findings, then it, that would, the subdivision map act would prevent the commission from being able to deny the application.
Correct, so we, we would need to come back with those findings before we can make a recommendation to the board, uh, to, to deny this project.
So that would fall on the people who voted no.
We're going to take a five-minute break, because I have something to do. Uh, we're taking five minutes.
Three Rivers really felt better.
If we can't make the...
It's simple.
In Mex, in Oaxaca, Mexico, so it, it's going to hit this whole Pacific Rim.
Okay, it looks like, uh, everybody has returned.
Chair? Uh, staff, uh, as Sandy mentioned, we have to make seven statutory findings under the subdivision map act for denial of the subdivision.
We're back in session, by the way.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, so, uh, through the chair, uh, staff would have to make the seven statutory findings for denial of a, a subdivision, um, so we would recommend a continuation of this project so staff can make that recommendation back to the planning commission before we proceed, uh, to a recommendation to the board.
Can the applicant at this point, uh, just go direct to the board of supervisors?
Uh, they, they could, but, um, to validate and justify, uh, the, the applicants, uh, afforded their due process right under the subdivision map act, that staff would actually make those findings for the planning commission as to why they, they could deny it. If those findings cannot be made, then, um, it would be the board's, uh, authority to, to approve.
So would someone like to make a motion, uh, to, uh, request staff to fa, make the mandatory findings or bring it back at a time certain?
I'd...
Which is a continuation of this hearing?
Of this.
I'll make the motion to continue so staff can come back with finding.
Time certain?
July, what do you have? Mar- oh.
Eight. You want July 8?
July, date certain. No, new notification required.
And we can comment on and add to or not findings?
Uh, when we come back to make the findings in front of the planning commission, they'd have the ability to, to add to.
I've got a, a question. If it's continued to a date and time certain, there's not a legal requirement to do a new notification.
That, that's correct. No, 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 new notification required.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move right along now.
We didn't finish the vote. We got a vote. Did someone make that motion? We had a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Move, motion.
We had a second? Okay. Motion carried. We'll move on to item 5D. Tenet of subdivision map, TSM 20-002, development agreement, intended parcel map for Omni Development Group and Horn Engineering Agreement, Develop 20-001 to construction, make contributions towards the cost of public improvements, including building a right turn pocket, moving the existing signal, while, uh, building an outside detention ba- basin to county standards, contribute a, uh, one-third portion of the dual left pocket on Road 67 for Betty Drive, subject to reimbursement agreements, and to mitigate the impact development of the project site as such developments occur. Tenet parcel map, PM 20-010, proposes to divide 15.13 acres into eight parcels, and, um, in a C2MU, general commu- commercial, mixed-use overlay combining zone. The site is located at Betty Drive and, and, uh, I don't know, what, what's the cross street? Betty Drive and...
Road 67.
There's a Road 67. In an unincorporated, uh, community of Goshen, and Sandy, you get to do it again. We're going to really work you over on this one, so just hold on.
Sandy, if you could go ahead and start, uh, I'll have some, uh, comments to make about the development agreement, but go, go ahead, Sandy, start the presentation.
Uh, the application is development agreement number 20-001 and tentative parcel map number PPM 20-007. The applicant is Omni Development Group, and their agent is Yamame and Horn Engineering.
The applicant is Omni Development Group and their agent is Yamabe and Horn Engineering. Development agreement 20-001 is to construct and make contributions towards the cost of public improvements, including building a right turn pocket, moving the existing signal, building an onsite detention basin to county standards, and contributing a one-third portion of the dual left turn pockets onto Road 67 from Betty Drive, subject to a reimbursement agreement, and to mitigate the impacts of development of the project site as such development occurs. Tentative parcel map 20-010 proposes to divide 15.13 acres into eight parcels. Parcel 1 would be 6.55 acres, parcel 2 would be .80 acres, parcel 3 would be .45 acres, parcel 4 would be .71 acres, parcels 5 and 6 would be .49 acres, parcel 7 would be 2.13 acres, and parcel 8 would be 3.51 acres. And this would be in the general commercial with the mixed use overlay combining zone or C2MU zone. Properties located at 6670 Betty Drive in the unincorporated community of Goshen. Again, the applicant is Omni Development Group and the agent is Yamabe and Horn Engineering and the location is 6670 Betty Drive and the unincorporated community of Goshen.
Thank you, Sandy. So I just wanted to walk the planning commission through the process of this project. This project already has approved grading plans and improvement plans and but for the subdivision today, this project would not be before you. The Omni Development is geared and ready to proceed on building out its site plan under the zoning. All of that it has proposed fits the zoning. The only difference is the owner might want to sell off these property areas in the near future instead of building it out and selling it off later. So the timing of this really works well for the county. As far as the improvements that were done to Betty Drive, as far as the overpass, the reality is that right there at that intersection, because of the lack of right turn pockets and another dual left turn pockets, we foresee traffic in the future exceeding level of service standards and potentially in the near future, given all the development that's happening in Visalia right now. So this is a way to fix those problems, unforeseen problems, especially if this intersection's going to develop out as quickly as it it has. To go, give you a little bit more background, already on the south side of this intersection, Lucky Tandy's Development's nearly built out. Western Milling is building a CNG facility for their own trucks. Right now, they're only going to have access from near Western Milling properties, so they're not going to have direct access off 67. But this project will have direct access off of Road 67, not off Betty Drive. So regardless, you're going to see a lot of queuing on the, especially for right turns. So the county and the developers have been working together to try to resolve those issues, and I do commend the the developers for helping us out here. But if I could turn your attention to page 26 of your agenda item. The other concern with this project itself is there is county-owned underlying property that through this development agreement for the improvements, the developers willing to build, the county will grant them through grant deeds, the county properties. So quid pro quo, that's what development agreements are for. So this would need, like all development agreements, to be approved through through ordinance. So this is a a real development agreement we're working on here. And again, the owner's amenable to to that and also sharing some money in regards to the left turn pocket off of Betty Drive. We put a second, we have a left turn pocket already, but we put a second lane in there, and that would should cover U-turns coming out of Lucky's property to the south and also allow for a second, secondary source to get those cars on 267 quicker. So we've been working for a little bit over a year on this process to finally get it in front of you today. We're fortunate that the Omni wants to move forward on tentative map, that we could tie this development agreement to. But otherwise, again, like I said, they're entitled to, under the building permits, they've already have approved grade and do all their infrastructure improvements. So they're they're ready to move forward. They're anxious to move forward. We're pushing to get this, so they can move forward this calendar year with this development Does the planning commission have any questions about the development agreement itself?
I've driven through that intersection 100 times, but that you want to widen the lanes going east on Betty Drive so you can have more left and turn lanes onto Road 67?
Well, we can't, there is really, except on the south side of Betty Drive right there, if you were to make a left into Road 67, there is no real more room in that intersection to account for any of this. So it wouldn't necessarily be widening that much. There is enough room in there to make a secondary left turn turn pocket. So we're not, we would need to take a little bit of property on the south side at Road 67 and Betty, but there's no need to take any more property. But we would put a secondary, limit the median space and put a secondary left turn lane onto 67.
Was Caltrans involved in the approval of this process also?
No. This is on our, we've concurrently going through the handover of the properties from Caltrans and believe me, this, there's some things, deals you regret getting in because they're so onerous. This one's fairly onerous, taking a lot of effort on public works part, especially on the surveyor's part, to make sure this is absolutely right. Yes, there has been a handover of portions of Nutmeg that are going through this process, but it's outside of the property line of the owner of this, of Omni. So that's between us and Caltrans, but Caltrans does not have any approval jurisdiction over this project.
Nutmeg Road, which is the on-ramp, is that getting bigger?
No. Again, this will not increase any of the boundaries. We do not believe we need actually portions of Nutmeg like we originally intended, but just on the off chance we do, if there is overlap, because Nutmeg is ours, if there is overlap, we have provisions in this development agreement as an exchange, but from what we're hearing from Yamabe and Horn is that this project location shouldn't affect our property right of Nutmeg. Ultimately, we could grant that, but right now, we're only intending to quitclaim Elder and the Elder alignment on the south side in that corner of Betty and Reagan so far, not Betty and Reagan, Betty and 67.
Well, on Elder, that's where that hamburger place is? Is that what you're talking about?
No, Elder's on this property, on the north side of this property.
Okay. And so what, the West Main Street, are you're changing those roads at all or not? No.
We were anticipating potentially realigning a portion of what this is calling West Street and 67, but as we sit right now, Western Milling doesn't really see a need to do any improvements on their side of it. And the county's asking for that, but it's not, if everybody decides to go forward with with that proposal, Western Milling and with, Western Milling and Omni, if they decide to all move forward, then that's something that everybody's good with, then we would go forward on that route. But as we sit right now, Western Milling thinks they're okay, and they also have approved site plans and grading permit. So there's no real teeth we have to to slow up their process. So it doesn't make sense to do, if it does not make sense to do both sides of that intersection all at the same time, then then again, that proposal's kind of off the table. But as we sit right now, Omni would still be on the hook to do their side of that intersection.
So we're really tasked with approving eight parcels?
Yes.
Or they've already been approved?
No, the parcels have not been approved. We don't have that power, only you do. But the, we did.
But today, you want us to approve tentatively?
We are requesting the approval of that. This development agreement, I just wanted to explain to you, it's it's intricate and it's asking a lot of you to to look into, but again, this would just be a recommendation to the board to to approve this development agreement. It's one of the more sophisticated ones we've worked on, and I just wanted to let the planning commission know that a year's worth of work has gone into getting where we're at with this development agreement. And it's it's complicated, but if you look at the actual acreages of all these lands that we own, you know, it's probably less than a half an acre, so.
So are you going to get to the parcel map? You'll show us that?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's my discussion on the development agreement. Again, if you have any questions.
So if Western Milling doesn't want to do it, you're saying it still can go on, just not that side of the street? Because that's what they're saying here, right?
Well, and if you look at, I just brought that up because that's what they're kind of saying in their letter right there. If you look at, where is it? Exhibit, oh, on page 35, you can kind of see the site plan, and you can see how that is a little bit more of a T-intersection on the north side of the the property, right where 67 and Elder would come together. That that intersection, we would like to make into a real perpendicular intersection. It's a little bit loose right now. It, you know, fulfills all the engineering standards as it sits right now, so it's, we would just like to make it better and smoother, transition, stop sign, et cetera. But again, if Western Milling's not willing to have their side improve to those standards, then again, Omni would still be on the hook to do their side, but if it doesn't make sense to us anymore just to do one side of this, that that could go away as far as the proposal. There's a few moving parts still in this process, but I just wanted to, I think we got, you know, 80% of it covered through this development agreement. So Omni's on the the hook for these things, and we'll look for other ways to get the other parties involved. I did want to discuss a little bit right now about that letter from Western Milling because I talked to Bill Sweeney the other day, and they sent email to Sandy here. Basically, they just want to be on the record that we that we know that Western Milling does have and does make train horn noises as across the intersection, similar to what we experienced when we had that RBT case. Probably not as much as RBT backing and forwards, but they do have train noises and that they are Western Milling and there is dust and they're in industrial use, but they just want to be on the record as saying that, but otherwise, they didn't want to, they believe in private property rights and they didn't want to hold up this project. They just want to be on the record saying that.
Well, they're, they were there first, so any development has to know that they're going to.
I'm sure the developer is aware that Western Milling is is next to them, so.
Is the statement in here from this email that says thus we have no interest in participating in the cost of realignment in the intersection, they're already telling us they don't want to pay, so that means we don't do their side?
They're saying they don't want to pay, but they would do a good faith effort to try to meet what we're requesting them to do. We've sent them all of our AutoCAD drawings as far as what that alignment looks like, so they have that in front of them. And it's not a, it's not an absolute no, but they're not willing to do, contribute money or what we think the cost will be as far as reimbursement agreement or anything else like that. They're just saying that if they do it, they're going to do it on their own. And I'm sure there'll be other requests that they make as far as whether the sidewalk, removal of the sidewalk was one of the propositions they were they were adding to that as well. But again, that's the development agreement, and the tentative map's much more straightforward. So go ahead, Sandy.
Okay. On the screen now is the hearing notification map. The public hearing notice was published in the Visalia Times Delta on June 12. The next diagram is the vicinity map. Project site is located at 6670 Betty Drive, and it's in the unincorporated community of Goshen and just to the west of the city of Visalia. The site contains two existing buildings that are proposed to be removed, and the diagram is a aerial image that, you know, shows what's on the property now and the surrounding area. The project site is located within the Visalia area urban boundary and the Goshen urban development boundary. Figure four of the 2018 update of the Goshen Community Plan designates the project site as highway commercial. The relevant general plan policies are Ag 1.14, right to farm noticing, LU 1.10 roadway access, AQ 1.5 California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA compliance, AQ 4.2 dust suppression measures, AQ 3.6 mixed land uses, and HS 1.9 emergency access. Page 78 of the 2018 update to the Goshen Community Plan states the following. There is a limited need for expansion of commercial zoning as there is limited discretionary income available from the community. New commercial uses will mostly rely on the regional and highway market for revenue potential.
So before you go on there, Sandy, I just wanted to clarify that statement that was made when we wrote that in the Goshen community. We didn't see a need for neighborhood commercial, more neighborhood commercial zoning, so we really upped our highway commercial zoning for the pass-by traffic that this this project would entertain. Go ahead.
As such, there is limited potential for large local community serving commercial uses. New commercial uses will likely be highway oriented. One potential highway commercial use is gasoline slash truck stop supercenter, EG Loves or Pilot. As Goshen is located near the intersection of Highway 99 and Highway 198, areas adjacent to the proposed Betty Drive interchains are an ideal location for such commercial use. In addition, there's not a gasoline truck stop supercenter in the Goshen-Visalia area. The project site is not located within the Visalia Municipal Airport area of influence. The project is consistent with the 2018 update of the Goshen Community Plan and the Tulare County General Plan 2030. The subject site is zone C2MU, general commercial with the mixed use overlay combining zone. Section 12D6 of the zoning ordinance requires a minimum parcel size of not less than 10,000 square feet. The proposed land division is consistent with this section since all of the parcels are larger than 10,000 square feet in size. Subsequent to the proposed land division, the applicant intends to develop a commercial truck stop with a convenience store, restaurant. Uh, subsequent to the proposed land division, the applicant intends to develop a commercial truck stop with a convenience store, restaurants, and a hotel. Section eighteen point nine C of the zoning ordinance states, uses and activities that are found by the planning director to be similar to and compatible with those specific zoning districts are also allowed. The proposal has met the required findings for approval of the development agreement and the tentative parcel map. Staff recommends that the commission recommend approval of the development agreement and the tentative parcel map. The site is not under a Williamson Act contract and consultation notices. Uh, the Public Works Engineering Department, Fire Department, Environmental Health Services Division, and Caltrans responded to a consultation request sent on March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty and did have recommended conditions of approval. And, uh, all of the comment letters are part of the packet and, uh, conditions are, you know, uh, proposed in the, uh, resolution. The diagram on the screen now is, uh, the existing zone, zoning map for C-two MU. And the next diagram is the, uh, site plan for the proposed subdivision. You know, the site has access to Betty Drive, Route sixty-seven, and, uh, Effie Drive. Um, however, as Aaron was saying earlier, uh, you know, as the development occurs, they're not gonna be, uh, utilizing Betty Drive, uh, for access. Staff is recommending that the commission hold a public hearing and also, uh, that, uh, the commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a statutory exemption, section one-five-two-six-eight B-one, uh, ministerial issuance of building permits and section fifteen-three-hundred-point-four for infrastructure improvements and approved development agreement number twenty-dash-zero-zero-one. And also that, uh, the commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a common sense exemption consistent with, uh, California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to section one-five-oh-six-one B-three since the proposed land division will not make any physical changes to the environment and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number twenty-dash-zero-one-zero. Uh, this concludes the staff report unless there are any questions.
My fellow commissioners, you have questions? Maria? No? Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm looking at it on, online, on my phone. No, I, do you want me to ask questions? Okay.
No.
No, I'm good for now.
Okay, good. Anyone else before I move on to, uh, open up the public hearing? Or public comment, rather? We are, I opened up the public hearing. Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the public comment at this time. And is there anyone here that would like to comment on this project for or against? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Samarasaba, nine-three-five May Cardon, Visalia, California. And, uh, I am the President of Omni Land Development Group and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Tell us about your project. I, I know about it, but kind of what you, you've got plans for A-
So, we're going to build a Travel Center of America, Arco A and PM, uh, truck stop. And we are in the process of working with national fast food chains and have a commitment from a national hotel chain to come into the project. It's been a long road with, with, uh, county staff, but I think we're here at the finish line, excited to get started.
Did you bring your checkbook or?
Not, not yet.
So, my fellow commissioners, you have some questions or?
No, just, just a comment.
Hmm?
Just a comment. It'd be really cool, although it's not something we can tell you to do, not that I know of, but it'd be really cool to put like a park in there, little park, pocket park, tiny park.
Okay.
If you're gonna, if it's gonna be a rest area, right?
Well, it didn't go anywhere, did it? But anyway, it's a goo- I agree, it is a good idea, so.
Yeah, I had to say-
About half the site, the park, be really nice.
The whole thing a park, but, yeah.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Could not thank you. So, I will close the, um, public comment and move on to staff's recommendation, which is, recommend?
Uh, staff is recommending that the commission recommend that the Board approve a statutory exemption, section one-five-two-six-eight B-one, ministerial issuance of building permits, and section fifteen-three-hundred-point-four for infrastructure improvements and approve development agreement number twenty-dash-zero-zero-one. And also that the commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a common sense exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to section one-five-oh-six-one B-three since the proposed division, the proposed land division will not make any physical changes to the environment and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number twenty-dash-zero-one-zero.
Will my commissioners like to make a motion if there's no further discussion?
We've got two actions to take here, right?
That's correct.
So, we'll make a recommendation, first one? Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve a statutory exemption for section one-five-two-six-eight subsection B-one, uh, ministerial, uh, issuance of the building permits and, uh, section fifteen-three-zero-zero-point-four for infrastructure improvements and recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a development agreement number DEV twenty-dash-zero-zero-one.
Have a second, please?
I'll second.
Vote?
I beat you to it. Sorry about that.
Do you need to redo it?
No. No, that's fine. You're good, Gil.
Results are? Motion carried. Now, we'll have a second motion, please?
I'll also recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a common sense exception, exemption consistent with the, uh, California, uh, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code Regulation, Sections one-five-zero-six-one subsection B-three since, uh, the proposed land division will not make any physical changes to the environment and recommend that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM twenty-dash-zero-one-zero.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Vote, please?
Hey, John, I got my eyes fixed. I can read these things a lot better.
Motion carried. So, we're moving on to the last item on the agenda, I think, is the last one. It's five. Development Agreement number, uh-
Uh, five E.
E, that I said, oh, we're E. We just did D. I knew that. Okay, here we go. Five E. Special Use Permit PSP nineteen dash zero-eight-three Angola East LLC, continued to a date certain July eighth. So, you're asking for a continuance, right? Is that what we're asking for?
That's correct, Chair. And I just wanted to say, uh, for the record, that, uh, there's many reasons that this was asked, uh, to be continued and recommended to be continued, but, um, there was some speculation as to some, um, inadvertencies in the description of this project and the ISM and D. Um, and, and there was one inadvertency, uh, associated with this as far as the project description related to a, a different project, uh, further up Deer Creek. But, uh, throughout the whole document, this site and this location is, uh, very, very well documented throughout the, the project. So, we don't see any grounds for, for recirculation of the ISM and D, but, uh, we asked for the continuance to make certain that, uh, um, the inadvertencies, uh, corrected. Um, and, uh, this would give, um, also for the record, this would give, uh, anybody reviewing this document another two weeks, uh, in addition to review this. So, we'd, not giving them a full thirty-day recirculation. But, uh, as, uh, this board is well aware of, we, like I said earlier, do accept comments right up to the last minute of the last hearing, uh, before the gavel hits. So, uh, there's no, no, uh, foul in, um, the, the process as far as, uh, cutting somebody off from commenting ever. And this planning commission themselves, uh, obviously accepts comments, uh, up to the end of the hearing. So, uh, we're, we're a little ways away from that and so that's why we're asking for this, uh, continuance.
I'd like to make a mo- I guess I have a public, uh-
No.
No public hearing, just straight, straight, uh-
Mr. Chair, I need to be, I'm gonna need to abstain from this vote as I am the land consultant for the developer.
But I don't think you have to leave the room.
No, but I'm just gonna abstain for the vote.
Just sit there and be quiet.
Right. Yeah, there's no testimony being taken, right? So.
Let, let the record reflect that council has shook, shook her head, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You do not have to leave.
So, let's make a, uh, someone make a, a motion to move this to a time certain, which is July eighth.
I'll make that motion for a continuance of this item to date certain July eighth.
Which is PSP nineteen dash zero-eight-three. So, we'll go for the second, please?
Oh, so, okay.
Vote? Looks like the motion's carried. Thank you. Abstain for obvious reasons, so we'll go on to Director's Report.
Chairman Whitlatch, Commissioners, I am Airbuck, Planning Director, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Um, I just had a couple of, couple of few updates, um, to, uh, Mr. Diaz. We did have a discussion with, uh, Solid Waste in regards to, um, the tumbleweeds. Uh, so, uh, we, we are hoping to, uh, get ahead of that. And, uh, in, in discussions with Lucas, he's, he's definitely looking into how they can ma- maintain that, that better. They are proposing to move forward on, uh, a different project, um, regarding composting in, in that area. So, they, um, we're, we're very much amenable to, to hearing that. They might need to remove some weeds as well.
We don't have a resolution, we just have a discussion at this point, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, Solid Waste isn't gonna resolve through discretionary matter. But, uh, they're definitely looking, looking into that right now and we are having conversations with them as far as that, that, um, proposal to do, uh, composting over at the Visalia landfill. So, we're, we're in front of them and that, um, conversation will, will continue. Uh, no, I did not get an absolute, uh, we'll, we'll clean that up tomorrow. But, uh, I did get the, uh, the, uh, we'll look into how they, they can fund that moving, moving forward.
You know, um, Aaron, this is only halfway tongue-in-cheek, halfway serious, cause it's a legit thing. But, um, there are a couple of businesses that make quite a bit of money off of selling tumbleweeds to decorations, movie sets, et cetera. And, uh, maybe let them know that they can self-sustain their cleanup project by selling half the lot of tumbleweeds.
Well, I, I do have economic development in my title here somewhere, so, uh, maybe it's an economic development opportunity. Uh, so, uh, a- a- again, I could bring that up to, uh, to Solid Waste. Um, and it, and it is an unusual, an unusual circumstance, you know, like to get, to have a solid waste facility next to these dairies and the, um, the tumbleweed issue is, is historically not a issue in other places. But, uh, we, we'll, we'll continue that conversation. Um, it, it behooves them to have, uh, all happy neighbors right now. As far as, uh, we've had a couple of, uh, grants that we went out for, uh, ones to help self-help out on their project. Uh, I think I informed this commission that, uh, earlier we had, um, through the Board, uh, helped them get bond funding, uh, for the Goshen project, uh, Self-Helps Goshen project. But that, uh, funding fell through and, uh, we just quickly reapplied for a grant we just received, uh, yesterday so that they have the funding to move forward on the next phase of their, their project. Uh, we also just received, uh, four more complete streets projects. Um, and, uh, so that's gonna make our grand total of, uh, seven that we're working on, on right now. Um, and we're also going forward on a whole new ATP Cycle Five list. So, uh, as Reed presented to the Board yesterday about RMA's successes, uh, nineteen million last year in, uh, uh, road projects, uh, a lot of those complete streets. So, uh, we're, we're very proud of that program and, uh, we'll continue to work on it. Seems to be a way to get, uh, Caltrans and TCAG to, to focus their attention on some of those projects. Um, also, uh, we were in conversations with, uh, Caltrans yesterday for our SB seven forty-three project. Uh, seems like, uh, they're in agreement with our approach. Uh, so, we're looking to bring that in front of you very quickly, uh, hopefully in July here and, um, resolve SB seven forty-three, uh, for this county. Um, the, it, it will also be with a general plan amendment, so we will be changing certain sections to move a little bit away from level of service. Level of service doesn't go away, still part of the analysis, but, uh, we'll be adding SB seven forty-three to that guidance. And then finally, uh, complete streets will finally be added to our, our general plan. We've been doing, like most things, one community at a time without doing real updates to the general plan itself. That now will add, uh, complete streets to the general plan. And then, um, another, uh, grant, uh, we've been working on, um, is the, um, LEAP funding. And the LEAP funding, uh, is for infrastructure projects related to housing. Our share of that's, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, in between that and SB seventy-two, we'll have quite a bit of money to, to actually look at the infrastructure of this county. We are proposing to, to finally, uh, update the municipal service reviews that have not been updated in quite a few years and work with Lafco to at least, uh, update the infrastructure component of the, uh, municipal service reviews so we all know where we sit in regards to infrastructure by community. So, that, uh, proposal's going to the Board at the end of the month. Uh, outside of that, um, you know, uh, we, we've still coming through the coronavirus. As Reed said yesterday, we are ninety, ninety-five percent, uh, back in the office. Um, we still have some people working from home a- as they, uh, they can and are efficient working from home, but for the most part, most people are back, back in the office. And we are increasing our appointments upwards of, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five a day right now. So, um, we're, we're going to continue to do things by appointment for as long as we can. And that's in addition, we have twenty-five regular appointments and we have ten, ten appointments for code enforcement on top of that, so. By the numbers, you know, we've, uh, nearly did a, a million, uh, I'm sorry, half a million, uh, potholes last year. Uh, over the last three years, we've been pretty consistent around that number. Um, we are looking to get a street sweeper next year, so that'll be new and exciting and, um-
Why is that?
What, why is that new and exciting? Cause we don't have one. Then, then the interesting-
Is that a person that's gonna be out there with a broom or a?
Well, that's what, uh, Johnny's Road Department's been out there brooming, uh, for years, um, when needed. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's been a long time coming. And, uh, so, the interesting part will be, uh, the, uh, trying to program, you know, how you move through this county efficiently with, with one. Uh, and then the other, um, thing is that, uh, you know, as far as our code compliance, uh, you know, quite a few million cannabis plants, uh, were taken, eradicated last year. And so, code compliance, uh, heavily involved in that as far as warrants. Um, and honestly, we've only seen a few hemp, uh, permits coming through, I think, three so far. Uh, so, that, that's a little bit slow-moving, so, um, I, I foresee a little bit more work at, uh, cannabis in the, in the future. But, uh, overall, you know, the presentation Reed gave to the Board yesterday about RMA's, um, uh, what we've accomplished over the last year, it's, it's, uh, it, it, it makes me proud to be part, part of the organization and what we've ad-
the organization in what we've achieved, and from the, the old days of RMA to where we're at now is really a testament to the, the management and the people who work there. So, and a lot of guidance from the discretionary boards over the years to, to do a little bit better job, so I think we're pulling our weight and we're doing, definitely doing a lot, lot of work right now, so, again, very proud to work in this organization. That's all I have for today. Did you have anything to add, Hector?
Move to my fellow commissioners, anything you want to add?
I've got a question, I guess, for council on this. As you guys know, I'm going to have to recuse myself when Angola East LLC comes up, but I am the land consultant, and I will leave the diast, but I'll be sitting out in the, in the thing there, and I do not want to give up my right as a private citizen to provide testimony if I have to.
I'll look into it. I, I think you would have to step off the dais, identify the conflict, and then you sit out there and then can talk, is my understanding.
Yeah, well, if I give testimony, that's going to be my job.
Through, through the chair, as long as you're not talking to any of the other commissioners privately about this, or discussing throughout the, the agenda item, this item with them, and you are sitting out there and you do come forward at the time of the hearing.
I may not allow it, so...
I will say that on the project at my place, County Council did come to me afterwards and say I should not have been out there.
Ah.
Which, which council is that?
The former one.
All right, good.
You know, and I, and I can understand where they come from, because that might open the county to a little bit of exposure here, but I shouldn't have to give up my rights as a private citizen to testify on something that would affect my way of life.
All those ethics and perceptions and all that kind of stuff, so, I'm not an attorney, so I'm deferring to whatever you say.
Just so I don't have to get to Supreme Court, could drag their hearing out sometimes.
For Commissioner Diaz's purposes, we will, County Council will look into that and give you an absolute answer.
Okay.
Okay, has that covered? If not, meeting adjourned.
It's seriously in the neighborhood of 50 to 100 grand...